Yeah.
All right. Good morning, everyone. JL call this meeting to order the first item will any agenda to approve our minutes of May twenty nine. So move to a second. Any changes or limits to the minutes? Not hearing any ones in favor of adopting, you can get by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote unanimous. Now we got a bid opening for garment product. JL Industries, looks like we only got one of those two or this one.
It's the only one I've received.
This one here?
Yep.
We got one. Well.
How did you advertise this one?
Um, cold calls, website.
Yeah.
Uh, newspaper. I went with all the major manufacturers.
There. This is her. You should know. Boy, they got a lot of stuff on here. We got some extras, we get some, well, the total, well, there's. Total is twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. But there are some things in here, there are some. Some extras.
Yes, there should be, there should be the dryer, the.
I understand.
Some cream machine.
So, yeah, so what is the direct department printer? So right now what we have is a silk screen process that's a multiple, multiple stage process. And there's a lot of waste because each screen is for a different color. So if something doesn't line up perfectly or it gets smudged, it's, we have to chime it. This basically prints like, um, it's printing on paper.
It's an, it's, it's an, it's a.
Transfer.
Pink jet.
It's a, it's basically an, yeah, but you have to pre-treat the garment and then it wears, it wears really well. Um, we have taken samples and washed them multiple times over at JL Industries to make sure it was gonna hold up.
Right.
It looks like one of the iron-on transfers, but it's more durable than the iron-on transfer.
We also have a, a second.
I told them to put.
Another bid.
I told them they could submit multiple bids for different.
For different machines?
For different machines.
Okay, well, why don't, why don't we, why don't we table these guys until you can look at the, look at the details and tell what you, what you guys, we want to see happen over there.
Yeah, that's for me.
Okay, second. The motion to table, not the big, always a favorite table, by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed with that, you will put back to us when.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, and three is an update on the roof project.
Jimmy.
Nice.
How are you, brother?
This'll take a. Yeah, this'll take a few minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Um, the last meeting that we met, we were looking for six air exchanges per hour.
Yeah.
And we were looking to change ductwork, um, in county attorneys and tour offices, okay? We did that Monday, we came in early, got that done. Now, after that meeting, that last meeting we had, Ray called me and asked me, um, to call Sarah Lineberry haunted. And to find out just what they're looking for.
Right.
And he also asked me to get ahold of Design Day to get a up-to-date report on air exchanges per hour. So I called Sarah, probably two days later, she called me back and I discussed with her. Are you still looking for six air exchanges per hour and what areas are you looking for in? And she said that because the pandemic is over, we're not concerned with six air exchanges anymore.
With Sarah. We blow a print half million dollars. There's more to it.
There's more to it, okay.
You're watching all the, what's, all the leases.
Yeah.
And, and she's like the main.
Okay, well, I, I said the good news, I mean, we're gonna find another three million, get it to four exchanges.
Right.
Or some.
Well, there is, there is some areas, uh, Mr. Chairman, that are at six.
Right.
And there's some areas that aren't at six.
Right.
So, you know, we've been spending months. Uh, I mean, poor Jimmy wants to retire and we've been spending month trying to, you know, figure this out. And, and also it's holding up the roof project.
Correct.
You know, and, you know, the redoing of the roof and we don't want to get ourselves in a position where we're gonna lose that money.
Yeah.
We have that one point four million dollars. So I made suggestions to Jimmy about who to call and what to do to see if we couldn't speed that up a little bit.
Yep.
So, keep going, Jimmy.
So then, uh, in November two thousand twenty, Dr. Gromich, COVID consultant came in and he's the one that suggested six air exchanges per hour. That's what brought all this on. But also, he, in his letter, he wrote that two air exchanges are acceptable under normal conditions. In certain areas, the way they do air exchanges is they go by diameter of the room. And how many people are gonna be in it? That's determined, that's the formula on how to figure it out. And that's what the engineers are doing. Okay? So then. Two, two meetings ago, um, Andy ended up from Design Day, ended up at the move, at the work, at the meeting. And I talked to him about how many times are we going to balance this building? We've already balanced the building three times, we've balanced the roof three times, while that was trying to get the six air exchanges per hour, okay? Now that we don't need it, I said, why aren't we good just the way we are? And he said, well, I guess that's up to you, he said, but the reason we, we have to go after the six air exchanges is because. In the beginning, when the drawings and everything was sent to the inspectors, that's what is on the drawing. So when the inspectors come, that's what they, that's what they have to go. So, he said, I will write a letter to the commissioners and they can decide on which way they wanna go, which you've seen all that, right?
I say, we sent you that letter last week. And, and there's nobody happy of it.
And he also said, Ray also had sent to you the copy of the, um. From Design Day, what the now air exchanges are. And if you look at that, all of those air exchanges except one, that's an install. That's an off-meet air exchange. And I brought that up to him and he said, well, that's gonna be up to the commissioner, which way they wanna go. Now, I don't know if you have your paper with you, but the way that this whole thing read was that they gave you four examples. And the first one was to keep the original six air exchanges per hour. What? Why would we want to do that now? Because we don't have to. And the next one was to do, eliminate the six air exchanges, but to meet the IMC ventilation. Which is the International Mechanical Code, okay?
Okay.
And it also said on that, um, without balancing inside the building. But if you look down on the bottom where it said frozen comms, it says does not, does not ensure terminal indoor comfort without further indoor balancing. So, we're back to inside balancing again. So then the next one was to end, um, to end the job right now. You know?
The dilemma is, can I just put some perspective on this, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, because it's.
We, we needed to, we. The heating and cooling units that were on the roof were at the end of their useful life.
Right.
Yeah. We, so we decided to use ARPA funds to, to replace that because it's gonna have to be done anyway, so why should the county pay for it if we can get ARPA? So that's what we ended up doing, uh, so the six air exchanges, ten air exchanges, four air exchanges, it doesn't matter. We would have to have replaced the roof units anyway.
Uh, right, all of those were sizing, was it?
It was simply sizing. Uh, I, I honestly believe, and I think Jimmy shares my belief, that there is no way to balance into six air exchanges per hour. Okay, you can, I mean, they've balanced this thing so many times now and they're, you know, they're not there. They don't need to be there. The, my understanding from Jimmy, uh, is that now that we've replaced those two noisy things.
Right.
You know, there was two noisy vents and those were replaced Monday morning.
They were too small.
Right.
They were too small for the edge.
Right.
Had a lot of whistle and coming in, so by enlarging them, it quieted them down.
Yeah. So, you know, that was a, a work distraction, but as far as we know, during the winter, you know, people were comfortable once, you know, they made adjustments. You know, there's no reason to think that they're not gonna be comfortable now, uh, you know, with the air exchanges we have. I don't, I don't feel like paying any more.
Yeah.
I don't feel like recommending to you gentlemen to pay any more money to, to this thing where we just keep doing the same thing over and over and over and over again.
And, and in the beginning of this write-up, Design Day sent to you, um, it said that they recommended. Uh, recommend that the existing supply air ducts be sealed using a product such as AeroSeal. They did suggest that, but way back in this project, it was brought up at the meetings. Turnstone and, and, um, Palmer and Secad, Secad investigated this. And all this is, it's like a radios, a radiator seal, okay? It's good for screw holes, but the way that Design Day was saying the amount of leakage. The companies they called said it would never take care of if you have that much leakage, it's not gonna seal that. So that was brought up, but he's got it in here written up like they suggested it, but we never did it, or we couldn't do it. Because the companies are saying no.
You know, Jimmy's attended every one of the construction meetings and that, you know, that's been his primary focus and, and, uh, it's just, it. You know, I think what we have now is as good as it's gonna get.
And it's a vast improvement.
A vast improvement over what we have. Vast improvement, they're new units, we haven't paid for them, they're all ARPA funds, no county money went to it.
Yeah.
And, but, you know, every, it's just like. I. I don't, I don't mean, I don't mean to be derogatory, but it's like, they just keep.
Yeah.
Adding stuff onto the bill.
Right.
For stuff that they've done three previous times.
Right.
Yeah. You know, and, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna authorize any more bills.
Right.
And, and now we have much more air circulation, air return in this building than we've ever had. So.
I'm good with it, right?
My, my recommendation would be to go with number three and let the inspector decide if there's anything that, more that we need to do.
Right. And hopefully he'll just walk in and say, yeah, you guys spent three and a half million dollars, did a good job.
Yep.
See you later.
And in order to close a job out completely, um, we would have to get Design Day inspection signed off.
Yeah.
Um, we would have to get, um, Palmer and Secad, which is, they haven't had the roof unit signed off yet, only because they are waiting on people balancing. Once they're okay, they'll do theirs and then we would get our, um.
I just wanna put an end to this, and I wanna put an end to spending, it's, it's like a constant bleed of money.
Yeah.
And, um, I just, I, I don't see it.
Well, somebody thinks somebody else is paying the bill, so they do it with the, they made, like, this is the third time, right? Because I remember the second time we did it.
This is the third. This is the third in my forty years.
Original, all the roof unit for a locker.
Right. And now, well, that's when, if you remember, that's when the public service is gonna be giving away electricity because we're gonna have all these Seabird plants and, you know, electricity was gonna be.
But they also built the building.
Yeah.
With no opening, oh, they, they just built the building as a sealed unit.
That's right.
Correct. And, and.
It was based on that press, and that was over fifty years ago.
Right, and then, then as a result of that, we went through, uh, nine eleven, once we went through nine eleven, we.
Converted to natural gas.
We converted, we had to, we converted, we had to do, we had to shut the building down security-wise, because we used to open up, you know, people used to come in through every door in the building. Which always allowed air circulation, but that all had to stop, so there's a lot of stuff that's happens.
Come on. On a, on a related note, uh, the fittings, the metal fittings on the, uh, on the roof, is that all taken care of now or are we still waiting?
Were, were metal fittings? The metal that protrudes the roof, Jimmy, we awarded that bid to cut those holes fittings off. We're, we're waiting on that, right, Doug, until.
Until, until.
Until we get the word that this is done.
Okay.
So that, you know, and, and the other thing is, I, I wanna get that done and, you know, we need to move the antennas.
Right.
Uh, you know, off the roof so that we can, I, I wanna get this stuff done before somebody says, oh geez, you know, it's, it's winter now, we can't do it and we lose the one point four million dollars. I mean, we, we've waited long, long enough, uh, my recommendation is be done with it. It's still gonna take another few weeks to get all these inspect, you know, approvals, but in the meantime, Dougie, you can start getting those guys cutting that metal off. And that, that's Murphy, right?
Correct.
Yeah. We, we can get Murph, you know, they're. You know, they won the bid on that.
Right. I, I know, I, I, you know, it's something that's hanging out there.
So let's, yeah, we can, but we can, as long as we're not gonna be doing anything more, they can start doing that, right, Dougie?
Yeah, um, the areas that don't have communications equipment attached to.
Yeah, I understand this, yeah, I understand that.
So where are they gonna put the antennas?
Um, I relocate it to a temporary mast office side of the building.
Oh.
There's more up there than needs to be there, there is some old equipment that's been discontinued.
Right, so simultaneous.
Yeah.
When we did the radio project, we did not pay them to remove the stuff that would, because we had to use some stuff simultaneously to make sure it worked. Part of the contract was not to remove the old stuff. So now that we're doing this, we're gonna, you know.
And clean it up.
We're gonna clean it up and only put back on there what needs to be on.
Yeah, so we're on a new system now.
Yes, oh yes, yeah, long time. Which is ninety-eight percent of coverage, which is as good as it gets.
Right. And everybody get their radios, uh, cities and towns.
They're in that.
They're in the process, uh, because they, yeah, I, I, I think, um, most of them have them, I, I probably, I'll invite Justin up.
Yeah, we'll find out where it sits.
Where it sits, I'll, I'll invite Justin up, uh, uh, if he would do that, Janet.
Next week.
Invite Justin up next week and we'll get a status report on who has him yet and who doesn't yet.
I know where else it has. I do know that.
Well, I promised the chief that.
Right.
You know, and, and all he needed was portable radios and one, one, one cruiser radio.
Right.
Uh, and, and he was using our cruiser radio, a spare that we had at the sheriff's department, so. I wanted to get the spare back and I promised him he'd be the first to, he hounded me forever and I promised that he'd be the first to get his. Again, just portable, so that was quick to do.
So in that, also, um, in the end, it stated that Design Day, whatever decision was made, they wanted it in writing.
Yeah, well, we'll give a copy in a minute.
Yeah, yeah. We're done.
Yeah.
Done with this.
Very good.
Chasing that tail. That's fair. All right. You guys anything else on this?
No.
You all set, gentlemen?
All set, thank you.
Doug, you got anything else on this?
Nothing.
Issue? Okay. All right. We got a list of upcoming events. Make sure you wear blue next, next Friday. It's Health Day.
You have a bid, you gentlemen all have a bid meeting in the emergency.
Right, we get a lot of.
We're red.
We get a lot of stuff next week, or, you know, a few meetings we have to be at next week. Okay, we got any old and new business we need to discuss?
I, I actually have something, so, sure. I attended the, uh, State County Finance Committee, it's my first meeting being appointed to that committee. Uh, actually, it's the second meeting, I missed the first, the doctor's appointment, but, uh, just a couple of general things. Um. The five oh four account, which is the account that nursing homes are funded out of is, uh, projected to be funded at two hundred and eighty-three million dollars for the next year. And up to about three hundred million the year after. That's the governor's proposal and that's been kept in place through the House and, and Senate. So I don't think there's, in a committee of conference, I doubt if there'll be a lot of changes.
We got a three percent part of that?
The three percent decrease is gone in the Senate.
Right, but this is.
Three percent in the cap.
This is, this is the total, this is the right total.
Right. As. And that increased, the three percent increase in the cap, both the House and the Senate have, have put that in there. However, there is, um, uh. What we affectionately call Chuck's Bill. Um, Chuck Dickerson from Rockingham County put together the numbers of the money that we did not get. In the first eighteen months of Biden declaring, uh, the COVID emergency. So we're, the state double billed, they build the feds and they build the counties. So, you know, the state just put that money in the general, uh, in the, uh, rainy day fund, uh, we want our money back. And that is in both the House and the Senate. That totals twenty-two million paid out over four years. So that will help us with the three percent added on, so.
Well, we'll give it for the first two years anyway, if they ask.
Well, for us, closer to three years, you know, depending on how long they keep the three percent. We, we spoke to a, a friendly senator. And what she said is, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna make a motion to bring it down to two percent, which is what the current law says. She said, but understand that, uh. It's only two years, it doesn't mean it's gonna go up three percent every year, so it could go up no percent like it did the last two years.
Right.
You know, the reason it went up is simple, the, you got rid of the interest and dividends tax and, and the state doesn't have the money anymore. So, um. Anyway, that, that part is looking favorable. Uh, again, it's gonna go to a committee of conference, but both the House and the Senate agree on.
Three percent increase in the cap.
Yep, and, and the refund of that twenty-two million dollars spread out.
They're gonna spread it out over four years, but the bottom line is, it's only for the biennium because in the third year, they, they could just commit with some other deal. You know, unless it was a legal document bound, that binds them, which they won't ever do.
How much is the budget short now? They, they were saying two, two hundred million.
Yeah.
Where, where did that number finally, did they say?
They say it's even, you know, that this is a, the Senate's claiming it's a balanced budget, the House is still claiming that the Senate's budget's all.
Is that, is that including the two hundred million or, I mean, wait, because it.
The Senate indicates it's a balanced budget, which included whatever anybody thought was the deficit. The House thought it was a deficit, but the Senate came up with two hundred and forty million more in revenue, like you said they were going to do.
Yeah, that, that happened.
And of course, the, uh, from what I was told, the governor thinks it's gonna be five hundred more than that. So, I, I don't know.
Five hundred million more?
So she said. Um.
Good luck with that.
Um, you know, and, and her claim is, you know, what do you guys care? I'm the one that has to live with it after you pass the budget. I mean, that's what it said in the unit leader. Now, that's what it's, that's what the unit leader said, that the governor said. So, uh, what I'm thinking is that, uh, there's a whole bunch of different things, obviously, that'll, that'll be resolved at committee of conference. I'm just trying to give you a status update.
Right.
Well, if you give it to her, she can spend it.
Yeah, I'm sure she will.
I mean, you know, he, no matter what.
Yeah.
Just bottom line.
The, uh, the feds, the Medicaid changes that the feds have made fortunately do not affect our bed tax or FMAP.
Okay.
Uh, so, you know, which is, uh, you know, the. Eight hundred and eighty million dollars that they're cutting out of Medicaid over the next ten years do not affect our two federally funded programs.
Do we know how many I know, what they're gonna mess with PSP as a result of this?
That's what, that's FMAP.
I know that, yeah, but.
They're not.
Feds.
No, I'm talking about the feds.
Okay.
They're not gonna mess with that or the bed tax.
I'm afraid Kennedy hasn't messed with that a little.
No, there, I think he's getting too much pressure from the, from the other states where, you know, like.
The big states.
The big states, you know, they draw down a lot.
A lot.
Uh, you know, that could be a real serious, I mean, serious problem for us.
What, what is gonna happen? It'll happen in the, I told you what's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen in the off.
It'll happen in the off, yeah.
Yeah. Uh.
That's what you'll have.
One of the, one of the other problems is, you know, that, uh, uh, a lot of times when the state. Takes a while to approve people on Medicaid.
Yeah.
Um, the lookback period now is thirty days instead of ninety days. Um.
So like, how, how they.
So in other words.
Yeah, I get it, so what are they?
No, I mean, the lookback period is still five years. What I'm saying is, once you're approved, they'll only look back thirty days, they won't look back ninety days. So we're likely to have more write-offs, uh, as a result of, of delay. Now, we have the advantage of, we more or less approve people on Medicaid.
In advance.
In advance.
Right, yeah.
Uh, or at least have a better idea, so that's gonna help us, um.
That'll help a little bit.
We don't know the pro share amount, as you know, that's a big budget item for us, uh, because two counties, not us, are. Didn't.
Didn't do the.
I'm trying to be politically correct. They, they didn't follow the advice given by the state in order to, um.
Make a drawdown?
Make a, a pri, establish a proper ratio, uh, uh, to get the most out of, out of their money, out of the pro share money.
Pro share is the program that's supposed to equalize Medicare and Medicaid payments.
And for, for, the counties are eligible because they take so many, like, I don't have any Medicare.
I really have private pay, right, so we. That's what it's designed to do, that's what it's designed to do, so it gives us, if we take all.
So they, they're still working on finalizing the numbers, uh, they won't release the other eight counties until these last two counties are resolved. But it has to be paid out by the end of June.
They owe it, they owe it to us, right?
Well, they'll pay us, it's just not.
Depends when you get it.
That's right, it, it'll still come by the end of June, just normally we know it by now, is what I was trying to say.
Do you have any dealings with the VA?
No.
They, they don't assign any veterans to your.
We do have veterans in our facility, but they're not veterans that qualify for, uh, the nursing home piece of their veterans benefits.
Okay, that's a question, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
And they did make an adjustment on our behavior unit rate, as I've been hounding them for more than a year.
Right. What did they commit at? Forty-five?
Forty-five dollars a day increase.
Yeah.
Uh. What?
To three forty, two fifty-nine.
Behavioral.
That's our behavior.
How much did it cost them?
Oh, that's, it's in the budget, we gotta separate it though.
We'll, we'll, um.
Oh, we didn't have.
This probably.
About the revenue.
I got a short memory, I have to be reminded.
Well, I'll, I'll dig out the, the cost numbers for it, yeah.
Well, I mean, you know.
I'll show it to you.
You gotta.
Yeah.
And, and now.
But that's good news that they gave us that rate increase.
Now, we're, we're, uh, we got a hundred, around a hundred and seventy patients.
It's about right.
Are we, are we increasing that? Do we see a, an increase in that, uh, up to capacity or what?
If I can, if I can increase the staffing, I could increase the.
Well, I mean, that's, that's been a problem right along.
Yeah. And, and staffing is better now, uh, but it's not to the point where I feel comfortable at opening the other unit. Because then we're gonna be back losing our tails by bringing in pool staff, which.
We don't wanna use pool.
I, I wanna avoid using pool staffs as.
There's a balance to that, Joe, between the.
We're otherwise, we're otherwise primarily, Phil, I have an admission today, they're going, uh, they're going to the state hospital to see somebody today. And I'm waiting for. And they're going to Wentworth Douglas and I have one pending, waiting for guardianship and the hearing today.
We haven't.
That pretty much brings us full.
Any, anyone with free.
Where we're.
I haven't heard from the, my good friend at Wentworth.
No, um, I checked on that this morning because I thought you might ask.
Yeah.
We have no, we have one at Wentworth Douglas right now that is seeking admission. We're going to see them, uh, tomorrow for a possible admission at the beginning of next week. Today, we're focusing on, uh, we had a behavior unit bed come open with the passing of one of our fairly long-term residents. Um, and we've identified somebody at the state hospital that can fill our behavior unit.
Okay.
Part of that kind of agreement we have with the state.
Yeah.
And, um, that, that will, uh, I'll know about that this afternoon when they come back from the state hospital. I'm gonna have them look at a couple of other people while they're out there.
So when you say full, is that at the hundred and seventy?
That's correct, that's right.
Okay, so we're, we're not looking at pulling, being full, full?
No, sir, we're not.
No, no, because we got one unit shut down, forty-two beds.
Right, correct.
Yeah. Okay.
And Hyder's been bouncing from three to seven.
Three to seven.
Which is what we budgeted for.
Right. It's interesting, I, you know, I've been thinking about Hyder a lot and what we might be able to do. We met at, you know, the three to seven mark for.
Well, I mean, it.
A long time, a couple of years anyway.
There, there's people that say that they, you know, that we could add people to the other half. The problem with that is, it, it doesn't bear out. I mean, there's Times Award seven and I get a call from Julie that says, hey, can I bring the eighth person in?
Yeah.
You know, as the first one around the corner and I'll say yes, and by the time we go to bring the eighth one in, one of the seventh has passed, so we haven't needed to do that. It, you know, there, there comes, there's a certain efficiency at which it runs at.
I get it.
And, and if, you know, even if we went, if we, if we staffed for fourteen and we only have ten, it sounds like an increase, but we're losing money.
Losing money.
So I'd rather, you know, stay where we are until such time as we get a consistent basis of, of demand greater than. Of, of demand greater than seven.
Right.
Now, and, and we haven't had that.
What about, you know, one of the things that. I wanted to have you look at, right, and I know you and I have talked about it before, but. We were, we had an assumption that the numbers in, at Hyder might go up, like, we, we, I mean, it's, it's a guessing game. That's what it is, because you don't know who's gonna need service, not need service, but running a. A more robust uh, respiratory care program.
Well, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our people at, at Hyder are respiratory, you know, they're. I budgeted two and a half and two and a half, two and a half G I P, general inpatient and two and a half respiratory.
Yeah.
Um, so we, we don't, we don't turn down any respiratory. We'll take every respiratory that comes. It pays well. Actually, we make.
I know.
From a pure profit standpoint, we make more profit on respiratory.
Right.
Because we don't have to pay for the meds. The meds are paid by, by the hospice.
Right.
If, if somebody is general inpatient, yes, we make a lot more in gross dollar, but some of those meds are really expensive.
Yeah, I, I just want to say something about respiratory care, and I have experienced some.
I know.
Be- because of HIPAA. And you guys do an excellent job, uh, because the doctor sees the patient and uh, it uh, I, I just want to bring that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, the, the respiratory I'm talking about is, is beyond just the hospice piece. It's, it's.
Right, right.
Well, this is like your case.
Yeah.
Yeah, in your situation, I mean.
Me, you might not think when, I know, but I know.
Well, I, I don't wanna.
That's what I'm talking about. I mean, I don't know if this. I just want to look at it again because.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think, I think it's an open book for respite. The ni- the nice part about respite is we can schedule it.
Right.
As opposed to, so we've.
Yeah.
So the hospices that we deal with, which is every hospice that wants to deal with us, we'd probably deal with ten different hospices. They know that if um, they're caring for somebody at home. You know, with the assistance of family and family wants to go for a wedding, as an example, I'm just throwing that out there. Um, they know about that wedding a month or six weeks in advance. So they'll literally make a reservation.
Right.
You know, and, and we'll be able to schedule them for the, for the respite pretty well. Um, you know, that way we know we reserve that, we reserve a bed for, for that person. Um, and, and I think we, we can, we will be able to enhance. And Dougie, I'm, I'm asking you, when, when is our, uh. When are they gonna be able to uh, put in uh, uh, door alarms and things over in Hyder?
We're on security as right now. We should have answered pretty soon. I'm getting that scheduled.
Okay, there is still a few, a handful of respite's that we don't take because they're wanderers.
Right.
And right now, unlike Riverside, Hyder does not have. Uh, se- security system, and some of the rooms actually have a door to the outside right in the room. And, and that's a dilemma, obviously, because, you know, we don't, it's not a one on one situation.
Right.
So there's still some people that we can't take respite, and, and I think that's going to enhance our respite when, once we get that. Uh, that system installed. Um, I mean.
I think those people, when you think about it, the wanderers and those people who are confused, they're the ones that are putting the most pressure on families. And that's where I, you know, if we were gonna, I would like to see us expand that opportunity. Through any healthcare provider uh, that's out there beyond hospitals. Okay, talking about generally, you know, general speaking.
You know, we. The, the nice part about no, no more certificate of need board, we're, we're, we are no longer bound by the regulations. That's certificate of need board placed on Hyder when we opened it.
Right.
So I can pretty well use it for anything I want, you know, and, and, and there is times, there is times. When we will send, there's nobody right now, but there is times when we'll move somebody from Riverside over, even if they're not on hospice. Because of a particular care reason.
Right.
That we can't manage at, at Riverside, but they can manage it at Hyder.
Yeah.
Uh, that does happen on, on a, um, on occasion. Um, again, like I said, there's nobody there right now, but it's probably happened once or twice. Um, at least twice in, over the last year. Um, it, it just worked out better.
I just, I just want to say that, you know, we, of course, I, I don't like to spend money, you know that, but this wandering, uh, this equipment that we're getting. Uh, in the family, we had somebody that walked off Riverside in December. And she was going to see her husband, and trouble is the husband had passed away.
Right.
And I don't know, you might remember that. And uh.
You know, when, when, when they went down to the church and prayed for everybody and, you know, we have those.
But, but actually, I don't know who, who was the, probably the previous uh. Administrator, uh, he seen her walking, and he said, where are you going? So I'm going to see Howard, my husband.
Yeah, it was a long, long time ago.
Yeah.
And we had, we, we've had a, a couple.
Uh, we had the one that wanted to pray at the church for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, she was very happy to ride back with the Denver police officer because he was young and handsome. She was, she was very happy. But interestingly enough, um, she started at Hyder. Um, and, and she came to us on, on unsecure, non secure unit. I don't know if unsecure is a word, non secure unit. And um, uh, she was fine for weeks and weeks, and then just all of a sudden, one night at eleven o'clock, just walked out the door. Now, the advantage we have. Is that when, uh, and, and Dee does this piece of things. W- w- we have a, um. Help me Dee, our, our plan that we have to, with our biggest deficiencies that we have to be concerned about.
Yeah, I have a question?
But no. Uh, he, we're worried about, about people walking out, we're worried about.
Oh, like a facility assessment?
Phil, it's facility assessments, the proper word. So we list. Eight or ten things that are the facility's biggest things. Over the years, we've.
And we tripped away at them.
We've tripped away at them, which included uh, cameras on the door, so we at least knew what door she left out of. Which is, you know, from Riverside, it's got a whole bunch of doors leading in a whole bunch of different directions. So we, we were able to see what door she left, what time she left, which gave us an idea about how far she could make it. So, you know, um, that, that narrowed the area down, and uh, we found her within a few hours.
Is that monitored?
No, but it's recorded. Yeah. So, you know, that's, that was a big help when, when we did that. Plus, simultaneously, we'd um. Were able to track with, with the uh, flying. To, you know, with the flying drones and, and that helps us. Drones don't find the person. They eliminate areas that we need to look, that we can focus on more likely areas.
Right.
Uh, so, you know, we, we were flying, we flew our drones that night and. Uh, eliminated all of the wooded areas.
Right.
Um, because, you know, they're heat seeking drones, so.
Hmm.
Um, you know, we, we also get surprised by how many deer are out there.
Looking at many missing deer, right?
I was so surprised. There's like hundreds of deer all in this area, but anyway, um.
They're right by the Hyder house. I've seen them.
Yep.
In the middle of the day, which is unusual. I see one coming last week. I seen one in the field uh, on Sixth Street.
Yep.
So we, I mean, right in the middle of the field, which is unusual for a deer, usually deer are.
We did re, we did find her and she was, she's back and, and now on a security unit. Yeah, I would say I'm not taking that chance again.
Okay, so when do we, if we expect a wanderer, uh, that, when that's supposed to be complete?
I've been in contact with them weekly. I think what they're doing is they're, they're struggling with staffing like a lot of people are. It's, it's a very specialized sort of installation. It's not just a low voltage type of installation. Um, they have some break attacks, and I insisted that we have the best technicians that they have. I don't want any junior guys touching Hyder. It's a. It's a great building and I want to maintain it that way, so. I think we can.
That's good. We'll get it done when we get it done.
Yeah.
It's good, I mean, it's been awarded, so we're, we're.
I, I assure you, he, he groans when he sees my caller ID.
I'm sure.
We aren't.
All righty.
You get any other old business?
No, sir, that's, that's the full update from the, our meeting.
All right.
The meetings have turned productive. I know when you were on the state and county finance committee, it seemed to spin its wheels, but now it's. And, and it also allows me to voice disagreements with one of the other counties that. He and I have a fundamental disagreement. We're good friends, I mean, we're good friends, we just think about things differently.
Well, every time we have a change in administration. State and county finance goes through a gyration. I get tired. I was on it for twenty five years. It just, it just, it gyrates. You go from one. You, you, you do things that matter, and then you, you go for a long period where you don't do anything that matters, and then it switch back and forth.
I think right now with all the changes that are happening, you know, on a federal level and, and the state level, um, you know, with the unknowns with the budget.
Yeah.
It, it serves a really good purpose.
There's no question about that. All righty. All right, any other old new business to them? No, Raymond, we all set on your end?
Yeah, the other thing, just one last thing is, is I'm not. I'm not, there is other county representation that I'm not necessarily comfortable representing this county.
Yep.
You know, saying the things that are said. Because he's appointed by the association of counties, there needs to be a contrary opinion, as you know. We were there, right? I mean, I asked George to go to the association meeting to force a vote. Um, on something that was important to the financial operation of this county. Which might not have been as important to the financial operation of.
His county, right. Yeah, the counties have interesting relationships.
Well, it's the sizes, it's the size.
The number of private paid beds.
The number of beds that county holds in relation with the number of beds.
Private sector patients.
So your big counties um, are, are a lot different than smaller.
Small county.
And we're, we're the middle county.
Right. Yeah. I spent years balancing that act for a long time.
Yeah, well, I, I have that history to go by, to, to guide me in this process.
Yeah.
So I get a question uh, next week.
We go, yeah, we.
Are we gonna do Friday instead of Thursday and?
No, I think you're gonna have to come in. Yeah, now, one of the days only.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I think. It's Wednesday, Thursday and Friday next.
The commissioners meetings, well, you have Wednesday, you have um.
We have to open the.
You have to award the tan bid and then Thursday, sign the tans.
Do you sign them the same day?
No, no, because we, we have to have, we are, bond council needs a day.
But, uh, but we could, we don't necessarily have to meet on Thursday. We could just individually come in.
No, yeah.
You have to have a meeting.
No, I'm sorry.
The record is having a meeting.
Yeah.
What did you do? Is it thirty on Friday?
We can't because we have to.
We've already scheduled everything with.
With bond.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I, I just uh.
It'll be a five minute, it's only gonna take us five minutes on Thursday if we.
It only, Wednesday and Thursday could be very different. That's the only thing you have.
That's the only thing we have going on.
Yeah, it could be five minutes each.
Well, it's good to know that, and that we even play any week.
Right.
Yeah, and also, of course, you gentlemen are invited to the, the.
Friday for the.
Thursday, Tuesday, to the golf tournament.
Oh, yeah.
So what'll happen, what normally happens is I'll go first thing in the morning, usually with George. Who will thank all the golfers for golfing. Um, and then I leave.
George leaves. Does anybody, does everybody usually show up?
Everybody shows up.
Commissioner.
No, a lot of times it's just George.
Other times it's just me. I thank them all at eight thirty, and then around one thirty, two o'clock. We have a luncheon for them, okay, the golfers, usually.
So are you saying it's free lunch? We show up?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then uh, we'll have a bunch of door prizes and aisles.
Yeah, I know, it's the same.
Yeah, it's the same as every.
Thirty, thirty.
Yeah, we're, we're aiming, uh.
It's the beneficiary of the, of the uh.
Our fondest wish program for the residents.
Right, okay.
So these are, these are things that the residents, um, are a special treat for them. But we could not possibly ask the taxpayers to pay for that, because some of the taxpayers couldn't afford to go on those special treats themselves.
Right.
So it, it. Twenty years, this is the twentieth anniversary.
That's crazy.
Uh, Ron Shagnan uh, came up with the idea when he was commissioner, and we started it the next year and, and um. Uh, we've had all kinds of trips for the residents, you know, like playoff games at Fenway when the Red Sox were.
Motorcycle rides.
Motorcycle rides. Uh, picnics, um, in a limo, you know, things like that. Again, we could never ask the public to pay for it because they couldn't, a lot of those people couldn't afford limo rides. But it's money that, that the staff has raised. Every penny goes to the fondest wish, and there's a separate accounting for that. And then a, a group, a, a, a committee of three or four staff members. Um, grant the wishes, and we encourage the families and the residents to come up with wishes. And then that staff member, uh, this, it's brought to the staff members and they approve it. So another example is we had. Somebody who's turning ninety and we had twelve people wanting to go out to New X for dinner. Now, nobody in, in.
These twelve, yeah.
Nobody in the twelve could afford to pay for, you know, the dinner at New X, so that was covered by the fondest wish. In addition, we have to send a staff member, of course, because if the resident needed to go to the bathroom or something, you know, they needed. Um, families really, it's, it's really difficult to assist your loved one, your family member to go to the bathroom. That's a, a very in, kind of embarrassing and difficult situation. Um, you know, that a lot of people go through when they're living at home, but if it's something, some people find it to be difficult. So we always send a staff member. Also, um, you know, the regulations call for the fact that. The person can only. A large number of our people can only be fed by people who are certified to feed. Um.
So is, is that a shotgun start and uh?
Yes, sir.
And is there still spots available in case anybody's listening?
I believe that there is. An ability to join a team that doesn't have a full four members. I, I think there's a couple of teams that are short a member. We're working on that, uh.
Normally it's full.
Yeah, we're working on that, um. One of our vendors, um, has, is, one of the bigwigs is coming up from the, the vendor organization. And has asked us to reach out to a couple of other counties that he does business with and invite them to play on his team. You know, at, at their expense.
Even when you go?
No, sir.
I used to, but I got a frozen shoulder, that's all I can.
No, I, I, I've, I've never golfed, so I'll go in the morning and then go back in the afternoon.
I have logged. As golf spell backwards. I also play the scene group.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've never, uh.
Absolutely.
Ten thousand swings, yeah.
Well, I, I, I like to play golf. Trouble is, every time I swing my back, tells me I shouldn't, I shouldn't be doing that.
Right. So we're, um, I was, Maria gave a report yesterday, a morning report, and she hopes to raise fifteen thousand dollars.
Oh, that's great. That's good.
This could be our biggest year. Every year has been our biggest year lately, so.
And the cost for somebody that's paying, uh, might want to go?
I believe it's a hundred and fifty dollars.
And now is Kachiko donated courses?
No, but they give us a, a.
A discount?
A, a good discount.
That's a, that's a good thing.
And everybody, uh, and, and, because Kachiko's a private club.
Hmm.
So. With, with, a lot, we get a lot of golfers that want to play Kachiko and they'll do this scramble because.
Yeah, we.
Because otherwise they can't play.
They can't play.
We used to do this for Easter seals. Uh, you buy a card and you go around different golf courses every, we used to do it every Tuesday.
But it was, it's, um, um.
It's a nice event.
It's a nice event.
Yeah. So you guys, if you want to show up for lunch. Around, usually, usually it's one thirty, two o'clock, and I try to get the door prizes done within a half hour if I can.
There's a lot of R A T L items, you know, items that have been donated by various supporting businesses that we then. You know, buy the asshole tickets for. We usually make two or three thousand dollars on the R A T L.
Yep.
So. I always sponsor a team, so there'll be. Pay day and have the team play. My stepson, his father, m- my fiance, or his fiancee, grandfather and brother are my four team members.
Well, speaking of Ron Shagnan, uh, the last thing he did, Orlando, New England, he's got his, uh, classmate that was killed in Vietnam. Uh, we got the bridge named after him on, uh, Salt Lake Street. And, uh, just want to bring that up because it's, uh, you know, we.
Ronnie was a good guy.
And he's a great commissioner.
He was a good commissioner.
So, just, just so, we, we're not forgetting.
No, he, he'll be named prominently Tuesday at, at, in this. Jerry, uh, Reese is coming and he's gonna kind of give a little history of the twenty year with. And one of the things he's gonna do for sure is, is talk about Ron Shagnan.
All right. So, I guess we'll move on to item six, questions and comments from the public, are you having any agenda? Susan, you have any personal?
There's a lot, anyway.
Yep, I do. Last week you had presented something, whether it added to a potentially warming center over behind the jail. Uh, which sparked me thinking about utilizing that building even further and I know in the CIP that, and it didn't pass, was that the jail wanted, um, an additional walk-in freezer. And I'm just wondering if something like that couldn't be incorporated into that building. Um, just food for thought, but it just was something that I've been thinking about.
And for, uh, it certainly, it certainly has the electric.
We have, we have an operational security issue over there.
We have, uh, if you go around the back of the building, there is a platform that was designed specifically for that.
Get you to where you need to be.
I appreciate that and that's, uh, that's absolutely something, but I think from an operational standpoint, it might be more beneficial if we could do that, uh, do that at that location because it doesn't, it doesn't have those security concerns that Commissioner McGee has talked about.
What might be able to happen is a records area that we've talked about. We, we talked about a record storage area, uh, going out where the third pod, uh, where we've dead-ended all the electric and plumbing for the potential third pod for some whole bunch of years down the road. Um, it, it would kind of waste that area to make any kind of permanent record storage. But a dead record storage, i- it wouldn't be that bad if it was dead records in the sense that you, you know, we wouldn't have to go there all the time. You know, maybe we keep the current two or three years local and then three or four years, because we have to keep seven years, you know, in that, in that dead record area. Um, so that might be something that, you know.
But you could always, you know, you could, I mean, you could always run or buy a, a, a storage bin and stick it out there.
That was. That was one of the, that was one of the thoughts, we, it was a matter of placement more than anything.
One of, yeah, there were, uh, we were, we were looking to utilize that storage space for a multitude of different things. Because at one point we had a really robust commissary unit, so we were gonna think about keeping stuff out there. But there was a question about being able to maintain the climate out there. If it's just dead records, we don't need the same, uh, the same, we don't have the same need as opposed to keeping.
One of the things we could do is, which we can make it as an options, uh, RFP, is to put a basement under the building itself. That's ten thousand square feet of whatever you want to do with it, whether it be under the, you know, the new warming center, if it goes there. You build a big basement underneath it, um, its access would be limited. You wouldn't be able to access it from the first floor. Uh, access would be to, you know, either end or both ends or something of that nature. It, it could be an option that I think we should put out in the RF, when we put the RFP out, it's an option for a basement. Look at its cost versus the, the, the standard frost wall, you have to build a frost wall anyway in this lab. Um, depending on the nature of the heating system, or the cost.
You could stick your heat system in the base. Which is, which is more, more efficient because of heat.
Depending on, you know, I mean, those are kind of options that we have to talk about, but I think that, that, that one makes most sense to me. At least initially. There was always a cost involved, but.
Well, you have to get lightweight concrete too.
Yeah, just the fence.
But that would limit the use of that building, say for, uh, at some point for, say, using big trucks. You know, you couldn't, you probably couldn't drive big trucks over that wall.
Yeah, reinforce.
Well, you, you usually wear concrete with steel beams, uh, but it's. It's expensive. Well, look at, look at the new garage at the state home.
Unless it's stick, unless they stick though, which, you know, again, those are all options that would have to. I think that we ought to look at that as an option, put a basement underneath it, because it just makes sense to me. And when you build a building, you get the cost of the roof, you get the cost.
Well, you, you get, you make, you make money in doing that.
You know, you're actually, yeah, it's actually.
Positive square foot is down the path.
Right, right, we have several ways, that's something we can talk about. You know, as when, when we go through that, when we get to that. Okay, Susan, you all set?
Just one other thing, you said that there was raffles, um, for the tournament. How would one contribute to such a raffle?
Well, I'll have, um, uh, I'll have Janet send you over the, we have a list of raffle items, I, I'll have Janet send you over the list of raffle items.
Particular business I'd like to?
Oh, yeah, that would be great. Just, uh, because we'd set up your own little raffle thing with.
But if I brought it here, like on Monday?
Get, well, absolutely. That would, absolutely, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
All righty. You all set now, Susan?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. I'm seven, motion going to non-public, so move with contracts and personnel. Second, I pay the Rock Road Call Commissioner Petrie.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin, myself, yes, okay, permission to work the task, nonpartisan session. Thank you all.